Good evening, we'll call to order the Eldreda City Commission for November 4th, 2019. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Haynes?
Present.
Commissioner Badgley?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badgley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkens?
Present.
Thank you. We have Pastor Corey Landreth to lead us in invocation.
Normally I do try to dress a little better when I approach you, but you know I'm a pastor and we do only work one day a week. So today, I was siding my mother-in-law's house. So here I am to pray for you and for our city, so let's do that now. Heavenly Father, thank you for just your grace and your mercy towards us. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to live in this country, to attend meetings like this, to deal with the business of our city. Father, you express the character traits that are best for us. Peace and patience and kindness and goodness and faithfulness and self-control. So God, I pray that the commissioners would all carry out those character traits in their own lives, and especially in these meetings. That as they carry out the work of our city, that they would do so with equity for all, with faithfulness to desires and plans of the people, with self-control as they deal with the spending. God, that there would be peace in this room, and that we would deal always with patience and kindness towards one another. Father, in a few hours, there'll be people lining up to vote. We just ask that your hand be with all of those who will be doing that. But God, we would find men and women to lead and govern that were honest, that would watch out for us as people, and would lead and guide and direct us as you would, with love and care and kindness. So God, would you bless this commission tonight as they do the work that is before them? Would you give them wisdom and understanding as they look into those things and do that work? And Father God, would you bless this city above all else? We ask all of this in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. We have a special group going to lead us today in the pledge of allegiance, Cub Scout PAC 410. Would you come forward and tell us your name, and then we can lead the pledge of allegiance?
My name is Cobin.
Dallas.
Liam Pelner.
Riley.
Jeremiah.
A.J. Bissah.
All right. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and
Thank you.
Thank you to the Cub Scout PAC 410. You guys are welcome to stay, or leave as you wish. Thanks. Great. Moving on, not having personal appearances tonight. Public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commissioner? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business, having none, new business, oh excuse me, consent agendas, next on our agenda, skip that. The agenda was sent out to the commissioners last week. You already have a chance to look at that, are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
October 16th meeting notes, the visitors. Becky and Sarah Fritley. Did Becky have a last name?
Fritley.
They weren't, they didn't have the same last names, did they?
Who's sistems?
Oh, they're sisters. Okay, I didn't, I thought that they had, I thought they were the same last names on those cards. All right, I'll shut up now, sorry.
All right. Any other questions? If there are none, I entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any other comment? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Not having old business, we'll move to new business. Next thing on our agenda, item nine, 205 North Washington demolition bid.
Yes, Commissioner, this was one of the properties that we went through the condemnation hearings on. That date, this property was given 60 days to commence repairs or demolition of that structure. That date came and went on October 27th. At the public hearing, the owner of the property shared with the commission at that time that they were going to auction the property October 3rd. That did not occur, and so you gave them 60 days at that public hearing. We have not been able to make contact with the owner via phone messages. So tonight, we're asking you to recommend the city manager to go into a contract with Stan's Farm for the demolition of the structure.
Okay. It is a topic we've had lots of discussion on. Any other questions or comments as we move forward?
No, we gave her longer, gave her the opportunity, so we did what we said we would do.
Okay. If there are any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that since Stan's Farm has submitted the lowest and best bid at $4,500 for demolition of 205 North Washington, that the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The item on our agenda would be special use permit for 105 North Arthur.
Let me pull a map up.
Thank you.
Kevin King applied for a special use permit to allow onsite vehicle storage on the property located at 105 North Arthur. The planning commission held a public hearing and considered the request. They did ask that a couple of conditions be placed on the property, and one of them is screened with a minimum six-foot privacy fence. And you will see that in the red hatch, the red dash line on the drawing there. That is a proposed fence to screen the vehicle storage, and that vehicle storage must be limited to inside the screened area. The planning commission voted four to two to recommend approval, and the applicant is here tonight if you have any specific questions as well.
I've just got one, Mr. King. In the letter you wrote, because I'm to the, oh yeah, sorry. In the letter you wrote, you stated you are the tenant, so you do not own the property?
Correct.
And so I assume that...
I turned in written permission from, so she's aware of my intent. And once I get it approved and used it, I do intend to purchase it from her, and she's aware of that too, so.
Scott, if Mr. King would, for whatever reason, not decide he didn't want to be a tenant anymore, or did not purchase the property, does the special use permit stay with the property?
With his use of the property.
It's just with his use of the property, so if he would leave, then this would go away?
Unlike zoning, you know, where that change stays. The special use goes with the use.
Which is his special use permit, it's not the property's special use.
If he were to sell it to someone else, he's going to use it the same way?
Same way, then.
Okay, okay. Then it'd be, so my question is, was the application by the property owner or by the tenant?
It was by me with permission from the property.
Is that kosher?
Mr. King served basically as an agent requesting somebody to see...
Well, was the application actually signed by the property owner? Isn't that, I mean, just kind of dotting i's and crossing t's, isn't that the...
We received from the property owner, Kevin wasn't assigned written permission. And she signed it. Signed, saying she was okay with this request.
And legally that flies? I just want to make sure we're okay.
It's similar to, you know, a number of, you see a lot of these zoning cases come before you were an agent or something, or the tenant is proposing something, and the landowner gives us a written permission saying, yes, I agree, I'm allowed to serve as a...
As long as it's not out of bounds.
So we've done this before.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dufferty brought this up, and I apologize. It appears the minutes of the meeting did not get included in your packet, so apologize about that.
So besides the fence, was there anything else the planning commission asked for?
Why do we have two descending? I guess is one of my questions.
You know, if I had those one minute side. I think in discussing with Jay...
This place would fall down without you, you know that?
The discussion was the current use, the code issues, the proximity of the residential neighborhood.
Yeah, but the residential neighborhood is also zone commercial, correct? Going to the north of it's zone commercial? If I read your comments correctly?
Correct. Being utilized as residential.
Being utilized as residential, but it's zone commercial?
Correct.
So at some point, somebody could purchase those homes, and it'd become commercial property?
And the...
Without any kind of zoning issue?
And what triggers a special use here is generally in C1, you see ladder automobile repair, you don't see outside storage. Those are oil change places, tire, quick loops, those sorts of things. In the industrial areas is where storage of vehicles is allowed, so it's allowed via special use in C1.
Why, why are we doing just six-foot fence? Is that just kind of the standard? Is that...
Anything higher than six foot is a special use permit itself, and that's really there, not causing eyes or something out of context with the structure, adjacent fences in there.
Well, I've noticed in the discussion, there's talking about an RV in there. Is that RV still there?
No, it currently is, it's by a friend.
Okay. Do you plan on it going back there?
Yes.
Please, I'm sorry.
Yes, but it's going to be behind the fence, up against the building, so it's going to...
How big of an RV is it?
It's a 32-foot RV, just a Class A.
Drivable?
Yes.
So it's probably about, what, 11-foot tall?
Give or take. Maybe 12, if their bags are all the way there.
And I'm just thinking with this information, I mean, I've seen it, but I didn't see an RV there. I like this, I personally like the suggestion of an eight-foot fence, just because of, as you say, a six-foot fence, you're still going to see half of that RV. We go A, you kind of see the top of it, but not as bad. I think the main reason we're putting the fence up is so we don't see your collection, right? Is that kind of what we're, would you be willing to do an eight-foot fence?
Yeah, as I told the planning commissioner that I'd be more willing to do that was part of it. I actually started assembling a six-foot, so that way if you guys drove by, you could see what it looks like with a six-foot. And to make it an eight-foot, I'd be willing to put lattice across the top, which is suggested during the last meeting, and that would...
You'd be willing to do that? That wouldn't put due burden on you?
No.
If we decided that eight would work, look better?
I could make that happen without excessive burden.
I appreciate that.
Scott, if we do decide or make that a condition, eight-foot, he won't be required to get another special use permit, will he?
Can we tie it?
Can we make it a contingency of this one? I was just trying to...
I was told in the last meeting that it could be going during the... Yeah, it's kind of, I mean, an eight-foot is a special use within your zoning regulations today.
We couldn't attach it to this special use?
You know, I think...
Or amend it, maybe?
You guys make the recommendation for an eight-foot, knowing that that's a special use.
It's already in the special use world, so...
It's a condition.
It's a condition to the special use.
Oh, just trying to save him another fee.
That's what I'm thinking too. I mean, that's where I was thinking is, you know, as a, and we amend things all the time up here, as amended by blah, blah, blah.
Right, the eight-foot fences is specifically pulled out of context for an S U P. I don't know as though this body would have the ability to short-circuit process. I mean, I guess I've never heard of that case being, I've never heard of a case...
Now you have.
Yeah, leave it to Matt.
Okay, well, leave it to me. Well, I mean, but even with this, now let me ask this. If that's the case, if we do an S U P, can we waive the fee?
The city will still have pretty significant publication costs, and frankly, the current fees for that barely cover our cost of publication.
I get that.
And in an eight-foot, in your regulations, when we get in the world talking about eight-foot fences, it is more, the planning commission is tasked to look at, are there unique topographical features on the property, that's worn a higher fence? So it's not generally thought of to screen more or to cover. There's something unique about the property that requires something taller than six foot.
Okay, but I think, I think purpose and geography could be substituted in this instance. I think the purpose behind the screening is to cover what's behind there, not for to cover any, I think, and in the end, you know, it takes three of us, of course, but personally, I kind of feel like, with him being, you know, saying that, hey, I will be storing something that's 12-foot, which is at some point twice as high as what the fence we're asking him to do, if we're trying to screen it, I would like to see it a little bit higher. Whatever that's got to happen, I know there's, I know there's a way to do it somewhere. You guys figure out a way to do all kinds of stuff around here, so I figure we can figure it out if need be. But again, I might be the only person here.
So what is your problem with a six-foot fence?
He's going to put a, he's going to put a RV right behind it that's twice as tall. We're trying to screen stuff.
But it's even going to be taller than an eight-foot, isn't it?
It is, but it will be less of a, you know, it'll be less seen. And when you go, when you're standing at, when you see a person looking at an eight-foot fence, you, well, your vision's like this, not like this. So you would still see it, see less of it. I would think that his neighbors would probably be a little bit happier with that also, just to kind of cover it up.
What's the plan, oh, the planning commission passed it with a six-foot fence?
Yes.
Right, oh, okay, I didn't...
The recommendation was made in there, the recommendation was made in there that the eight-foot fence would have probably brought those other two votes in.
Okay, well, I read it wrong, because I was, under this discussion by planning commission, I read Commissioner Feller said he wants the eight-foot fence, so we don't set a precedent, which I don't understand.
Without seeing the video.
Said he recommends an eight-foot, I didn't read down here on the motion, when the motion was made, that it was minimum six foot?
Yeah.
That's probably why he voted no.
Kurt, I got a question for you on this. Okay, we're recommending that he park all the vehicles inside the fence. If he chooses not to, and leaves them parked outside the fence on that private property, how hard is it for the city to enforce?
Depends if it fits under your, like, abandoned or inoperable.
But if they're legally tagged, you can park them on the street, right?
If they're legally tagged and can be driven, you can park them on the street, yeah. But if they were, if they were vehicles that were non-operable or not licensed, you wouldn't be able to put them on the street or private property, so.
If they're legally tagged and operable, you can park them outside of his fence on the paved area, like a driveway. If they're legally tagged and inoperable, then I think there's an ordinance about that.
No, it specifically says right here, applicant must limit vehicle storage to screened areas. I mean, it's specific, that's a condition of ordinance.
So if we're going to do a play on words, the planning commission set a minimum of six foot. So what big deal is it if we make it eight foot?
Because an eight-foot fence requires a separate special use permit.
But the planning commission set a minimum, and so we're saying, okay, our minimum is eight foot. We're playing with the...
But you can have a six-foot fence without a special use permit. You can't have an eight-foot fence.
Well, see, to me, they open themselves up with not having them.
But I guess I, thanks Kurt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I guess I'm of the opinion that it's all under the umbrella of a special use permit. The fact that the eight-foot, I mean, the only reason to me, as I read those or think about those, the only reason the eight-foot fence is called out specials, because you would be trying to do something else special on the property, you're just asking for an eight-foot fence, which we've had those. This is under the umbrella of a special use permit, which we can tie whatever conditions we want to that.
Sorry, are you going to run a salvage yard?
I have personal projects that I do on my own time, and, you know, sometimes when I have to take one apart to fix another, it makes it inoperable and unsightly, so that's why I was trying to get that commercial special use permit now.
So do you live in that structure there?
No, that's non-living quarters. There's a garage in there, and there's some, like a break room area type space. There's a bathroom in there, but there's no shower, there's, you know, a sink in there, but no stove, no dishwasher, nothing like that, so.
So would it be a fair statement to call you a recreational mechanic then?
Yes.
Okay.
Call those shade tree mechanics.
Recreational.
It's 2019.
There's no trees, it's recreation.
The shade tree's complete.
Thank you.
If the planning commission passed it with a minimum six-foot fence, I guess I don't have a problem with it. If we amend the way they passed it anyway, then don't we have to send it back to them?
I think you could definitely send it back to them, ask them to reconsider an eight-foot fence.
But if we amend their motion, don't we, doesn't it have to go back to them?
Unless a super majority of you make that determination.
Unless four of us agree to it.
If four of you agree to an eight-foot?
Yes.
So, make a motion and see where it goes.
I thought you said we can't do it.
You know, thinking about it, I would probably be comfortable with the fact that we could include it underneath the umbrella of a special use. I mean...
You convinced him to get one, yeah.
A special use permit allows you to set up conditions for the specific use, and while the fence would be, excuse me, a special use in and of itself, given the specifics of this specific case, I don't see why there would be any major issue with that.
Okay.
The ultimate challenge would be that, I mean, go ahead.
I was going to say, Mr. King, the existing fences are six foot, isn't it?
Correct, the fence along between the... The blue, the blue dash line? Yes, right here. That's just a six-foot fence, correct. And the red is the proposed, so as the planning commission reviewed it, that would be the new fence.
I think it's even installed now, isn't it?
What's that?
The new fence is in.
I've got six-foot up partially, it's not cemented and anything, it was just, it's still that way.
To kind of see what we would get.
Correct. And they were also saying during the planning commission that they liked this to be eight-foot, but they didn't care about the side property, because then it would match the current fence.
Well, you're adding trellis anyways, right? As much as you were saying, add a trellis.
And starting right here where the existing fence is, the property actually slopes down.
Okay. Okay, well, I will make a motion, but what do you want me to say to amend to the eight-foot fence?
Do you have a distance and a location, or do you want it all the way around?
I'm okay with the front section, I mean, because that's the main, that's the main visual point that the rest of everybody's going to see. The front, the proposed, the new fence, called the new fence, the red dash.
I think, Commissioner, if you go under the following conditions, and number one, just change that to say eight-foot privacy fence along the front edge of Arthur Street, and a minimum of six foot.
Oh, there we go, yeah, just changed that.
Any other adjacent fences.
What way does that yard slope? Does it slope towards the neighbor's house?
It slopes downhill. Towards...
To the west?
To the west.
So what are you going to do to keep whatever you spill on the ground, oil, whatever, on that property and not let it get over to the next property?
I didn't intend to have anything that was really going to spill, and that's just like I said, where I store, when I pull off fenders and hoods and stuff. All the motor stuff I tend to do, I actually do inside the shop, because there's a garage door access here and here, and it'll hold up to five vehicles inside.
How many, how many you planning on storing it?
I plan on actually getting rid of some that I have there currently.
Okay.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Okay. What is the ordinance?
G-1312.
1312. Okay, and one last, so eight-foot privacy fence is proposed by the applicant, what's the extra?
I would say minimum, or an eight-foot privacy fence along the front edge of Arthur Street.
Along the front.
And then six-foot privacy to tie in the remainder, something of that nature.
Okay.
He wouldn't be required of S P C C planning on that property since he's doing automobile?
But is he doing, he's not doing commercial work, though. That might be why he's, you know what I'm saying, like, he's not actually doing a business there.
It's recreation.
It's recreation. Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve case number 19-06-SUP, requesting an S U P for a vehicle storage yard with the following conditions. The property is screened with a minimum of eight-foot privacy fence along the frontage of the property. Six foot, and the remainder... six foot and the remainder as proposed by the applicant. And two, the vehicle storage area must be limited to the screened area, and that ordinance number G thirteen twelve P approved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? Be comfortable with that motion?
Did I spit on that word?
Okay. If none, then roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkerson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Next on our agenda would be, uh, Central and School Road Estates Final Plat.
Yes, before you deny, you have the consideration of accepting the easements and right-of-way that were created as part of the Central and School Road Commercial Estates Plat. The planning commission, um, reviewed the preliminary plat on September twenty-sixth and the final plat on October twenty-fourth, and voted unanimously for approval. With this plat, as far as, um, right-of-ways and easements, um, you see the creation of the right-of-way of Second Avenue that will tie on into the previously platted Second Avenue, which was part of the Prairieland Estates subdivision. And you'll see a, um, a utility easement, a ten-foot utility easement running on the south side of Second Avenue's right-of-way, along with utility easements to serve lots one, two, and three. With this plat, you have the creation of four lots. One large commercial, this is all commercial property, but one larger commercial lot, um, right on my cursor here. Two out, out parcels, and a western lot, which is, um, encumbered by floodplain, wetlands, um, pipeline right-of-way, as you follow my cursor, um, pump checks, and various other encumblances. This plat is located, um, to the west, its limits on the west are Boyer Road, to the south is Central Avenue, to the east is School Road.
Those two outlots, what, what is that, I just can't get the, like, dimensions in my head when I was looking at this earlier. What is, what is that size comparable to?
Two-hundred foot by a hundred-and-fifty foot, um...
Is that, um, like, Arby's lot?
I mean, what the developers hoping is, is it would be some sort of chain.
Yeah, it's close to an Arby's lot.
What?
It's close to an Arby's lot.
Is that close? And just try to visually?
Yeah, it's close.
Okay.
My concern here, and as I look at this, is lot three, really, if it has buildable area.
Well, that's, that's kind of where I was thinking, I'm trying to wrap my head around that.
So lot three would, you, you would see the structure, um, have to be located in the northeast corner with, um, parking, um, on that southwest, southwest side.
That west side, sorry.
So New Star would allow parking facilities over their easement. So it, it is, it is tough. The right-of-way, that pipeline, does make it tough. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about that and how to best, uh, situate that lot so it could be buildable, and they have, their engineer has laid out various different, um, other clients they've worked with in the past, their type of facilities, to see if they could get that to fit on there. So that, that would be the nature. It, it would be served up the, um, thirty-foot utility and access easement here, which would connect the School Road via drive parking, which would front Central Avenue with a building to the north.
How long ago was that pipeline easement given?
Long time ago.
I mean, we talking the forties, thirties?
You know, I, I, it, it's a line that runs from El Dorado on the Potlin.
Yeah.
So it's been there a long time. It's active.
Isn't it? Just poor planning, poor future planning a long time ago.
Well, and you know, the pipelines lay the, as the crow flies, shortest distance.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just...
I forgot to mention up here on Second Avenue, it, it will create these four residential lots as well.
They're gonna add four residential lots right there?
Correct.
Okay.
There's, the boundaries of Prairieland Estates, um, if you follow my cursor.
Yeah.
Were right in there. Um, the alignment of Second Avenue was created with Prairieland Estates, so that left them four lots that they're gonna try to sell off.
Yeah.
Get home.
And is the, the, the street's gonna go all the way through?
Yeah, it'll connect on to the T intersection.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, any questions? Or none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to have easement and right-of-way dedications in the Central and School Road Personal Estates Final Plat.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further question, comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Oh, you're busy today, aren't you?
Next on our agenda would be floodplain management ordinance.
Yes, as we discussed at the work session, um, the City of El Dorado was, um, partook in a remapping of our floodplain, and this was initiated, um, because of our levy, our levy that ties into U S fifty-four, and then on into the bankman of the Union Pacific Railroad. At the time, FEMA was requiring certification of those levies, that they would protect against a hundred-year event. And a previous commission made the determination that it wasn't cost-effective to go through the certification. Part of the findings were we would have to go, tie back levies, so we'd have to construct new levies and even possibly deconstruct our existing and build new. The majority of the, um, floodplain that the levy protects is public facilities, so it is the Central Park Ball Diamonds. Our water plant, although however it is elevated, the basins are elevated. And, um, so made a determination that it was in the, in the best interest to certify this levy that runs along my cursor here. So as part of that process, um, we have to go through and, and update our, our floodplain, our flood management, um, ordinance, and that is before you tonight. Really, this is just amending our existing to reflect the new max. We talked about some changes that the State of Kansas had recommended to the City of El Dorado. One was adding an additional foot of reboard, so currently today, and what you have before you this evening is, if you are to build within a floodplain, that lowest level S structure needs to be a foot above that hundred-year base flood elevation. The state had recommended that, that we go to two-foot. There wasn't a, a direct benefit to our citizens, so, um, staff chose to leave it at one foot for your consideration. And then also, there was a provision in there, um, requiring critical facilities, um, be elevated above five-hundred-year flood event, and, um, also have an accessible route to those facilities that was above that five-hundred-year event. And that, that impacts our water treatment facility, police station, city hall, um, wastewater treatment facility, so we did not add that provision in there. To, to be eligible for federal, um, disaster dollars, be it a tornado, flood, wind, hail, um, anything, the, the commission must have a revised floodplain management ordinance intact.
We don't have to adopt the state's recommendations, we just need to have the ordinance?
Right, and, and in front of you tonight, the ordinance would, or the, the, yes, the ordinance is actually already approved by the Division of Water Resources, the State of Kansas, and it is signed.
That's why I saw that it looked, it got approved a few weeks back, didn't it?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. Any further questions?
Got a number, Tabitha, please?
G thirteen fourteen.
I entertain a motion.
I move that ordinance number G one-three-one-three and ordinance amending Eldorado Municipal Code Section one-five-point-four-eight relating to floodplain management be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. This is Scott Rickett Show. Rocky Road Right-of-Way Vacation and Quit Claim Deed.
Yes, tonight for your consideration. Um, when Rocky Road and, um, Oil Hill Road were approved, I'll highlight this on Google Earth. This is a right-of-way you'll see right in here, which is a right-of-way for Rocky Road. This is Haverhill Oil Hill Road right-of-way. And there was a Y, um, this road was wide, and this is considered public right-of-way as well. You'll see this triangle here in the middle, that is real property owned by the City of El Dorado. So what we're asking to do this evening is vacate this portion of the right-of-way. It's no longer needed as public right-of-way. In turn, that right-of-way will then serve as a purpose as a drainage and utility easement. Currently today, A T and T has a phone line that runs through there, and, um, the improvement, the roadway improvements, um, petitioned by B G, there was some significant drainage, um, structure that had to be built in an area. So those, those need to stay in play as far as easements. And we're als- also asking you to consider quitclaim deeding this triangle portion to B G Products. That's no longer of need for the City of El Dorado. It will be retained with a, um, utility easement and drainage easement. Really kind of a final step in, in cleaning up the road improvements in that area. B G, um, Products is wishing to maintain that property, so they'll mow it and take care of it. And it is of no real property use for the City of El Dorado.
Okay, any more questions or questions from the commission? You have a ordinance number?
G thirteen fourteen.
I entertain a motion.
I move that ordinance number G thirteen fourteen, an ordinance relating to and providing for the vacation of a portion of street right-of-way generally located north of North Haverhill Road and west of Oil Hill Road to the City of Eldorado, Kansas be adopted.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Any further question or comment? I have roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Need a second motion to direct city manager for quitclaim deed.
I move to direct the city manager to quitclaim deeds the vacated right-of-way to B G Products.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further question? All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Airport project. Good evening, Brad.
Good evening. As we talked about in the work session, um, I'll just be brief, uh, about the, how the project started out. We have a twenty-twenty project to relamp, uh, runways four-two-two and one-five-three-three at the airport. When we submitted the initial project, it had, uh, pilot, uh, pappy lights, um, for both runways and redoing taxiway lights on, uh, taxiway Alpha and Bravo, both at the airport, uh, on runway one-five and one on runway four-two-two. The FAA came back, didn't bother to tell anyone that they had not approved, that they had removed the pappy lights and the taxiway lights for those runways because they didn't have enough money to do them all at once. While they believed they needed to be done at once, all at once, they didn't have the funding, uh, to do it. In order to do them, the city would have to carry, um, the balance of that project for the two years until the entitlement money comes in. It saves us just a little over a hundred thousand dollars in mobilization costs for the project, which ultimately the city's responsible for a portion of that as it is. So, uh, FAA has done this before, where the city will carry, the city or the agency, county, whatever it may be, will carry the balance until there, the cit, the airport's entitlement money comes in. So that's what we're asking you to do tonight, is to carry the balance. Uh, the twenty-twenty project, as I sat there in work session, we were just about done, and as I looked at that, the twenty-twenty project for the three-ninety-three has already been approved through the FAA, so when we talked about carrying the balance of seven-twenty, that, that's not what we have. We only had to carry the balance of three-twenty-seven, I think. So tonight, I think you're going to be asked to, uh, temp out to max, Tab, am I right, the three-twenty-seven, the three-hundred-twenty-seven thousand dollars. And as we, as we look a little deeper into when bills will start coming due, because this is all one, will, will go to be all one project completed in twenty-twenty, we, we may have a, a much better deal not having to, to temp out as mo, all of it. We're gonna ask for it just in case, but as we have to pay bills on our portion that we're carrying, it'll be important that, that money's there just in case the bills come in before the money does from the FAA. So the way the entitlement money, normally it comes in in April, it's been as late as August before. But it, most every year that, that we've had projects, we've been, the entitlement money has been available to us in April. Something else that, that may help us a little bit, when these lights were put in in the eighties, um, some of them were put in in cans and some of them weren't. Over the years, there has been, there, those that weren't have been changed over to those lighting fixtures being in cans. If that indeed is the case, and more are than aren't, they're planning on having to replace everything. They may still be able to use, if the lighting spacing is correct at the airport, that, on the runways, they may be able to reuse those cans that are there, which ultimately in the end will save us having to, to do it. And then there's nothing wrong with those cans, they're fine. The direct burial, they'll just come into those cans, they'll get rid of the direct burial in the areas that are not conduited, and, uh, they'll come into the can, the existing cans, so. There, there may be some projects, some cost savings there that we hadn't realized until we got deeper into it, so.
So will you just be financing for a year and a half?
Well, technically, it's, it's twenty-one, twenty-two, and a small portion in twenty-three. By the time the twenty-one money comes in, we, we may...
A year and a half, I would yield.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, if we're guessing when money's gonna come in, but...
But even if it comes in in August, our temporary note interest rate's pretty low, isn't it?
Well, it's, yeah, you, it'll be locked, locked in, is that correct?
But it, but with the, so I assume you put a pencil to it with the mobilization and the temp note interest and everything, it's still gonna save us money.
That's right, you'll, you'll have...
Than doing it in stages.
And who would you have do that? I mean, what is... And who would you have do that? I mean, what is, is that an outside specialty contractor?
For what?
To do the work.
Yeah, um, I don't know who, I don't, it, it hasn't gone, that portion of it hasn't gone to bid yet, so I don't know who it'll be, um, but.
But it's not like Carlisle can do it.
Right, no, no, they generally don't do. And like, like Pollard doesn't do, he, he doesn't do runway lighting, he doesn't do those installs, those sort of jobs are, it's a pretty big job. I mean, it's transformer replacement, it's, it's, there's lots of facets to it, so.
Specialized.
Robbie doesn't even like to work on our existing stuff, much less new stuff, so. But they, they were, they were excited that we were thinking forward enough that if we could save those mobilization costs, it was something that we could do to do that, but. Our portion is still the same, our portion will still be the same, uh, what we budget annually to do projects at the airport, so. Nothing really changes except we get to save money on the front end and get it all done.
Right.
In twenty twenty.
What's coming down the pike after this?
You mean out there for projects, um. I mean, by the time we build up enough entitlement money again to do something, we will probably be into, they've done a pavement assessment for the concrete runway. And we kicked that can down the road here, uh, two years ago. They did a rehab on one five and three three both. Both pavements were in good shape, um, but again, it is pavement. I mean, each year, we annually replace four to five panels out there because they heave because of how it was put in originally with little to no expansion on it. And so that's one of the things that they, they look at, but overall, the condition of the concrete runway is.
Pretty good.
Is in, is in good shape, so.
Buildings are good.
Super thick. With entitlement money, they don't like, they don't, that's a really super low priority. We do have, we do have T-hangers on, on, on our list, um, but again, you have to have all your other infrastructure improved. And there has to be money available for that to be able for them to, to help with T.
I'm just trying to think of what, what, what the next thing, I mean.
I mean.
I'm just looking at.
As far, as far as safety, they, they want us to focus on safety, airport safety first. And I think with lighting and conditions of our runways, uh, taxiways, um, tarmac, all of those are in great shape. We've done a bunch of projects over the last ten or twelve years. They've spent lots of money on cat and jack, so.
That's why I'm just trying to kind of see what.
And we'll, we'll stay on top of those things as, as maybe they loosen up some funds because they are getting a long ways in a lot, in a lot of Kansas airports, so. Money's going a long ways.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the combination of the airport projects and direct the staff to seek bids for a temporary note not to exceed three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, at which time the funding is necessary to complete the project.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Community development block grant application, next on our agenda. It's for district, for one forty-two North Main and the project that's going on there, recently awarded.
Uh, Mayor and City Commission, the grant agreement before you is from the state of Kansas Department of Commerce. They will enter into a grant agreement with the city and then we will distribute the funds to the grant, grantee, which is Nicole and Nathan Ins, Insmeier, uh, who are the property owners of one forty-two North Main Street, which is more commonly referred to as District one forty-two. As you'll notice in the grant agreement, the grant is for two hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. It does require an eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollar cash match by the grantee. And those funds will be used to complete the program activities as defined in the program application, which is predominantly described as, um, roofing rehabilitation, um, fire suppression. And, um, they'll also be doing some work in the basement to keep water from, uh, being retained in the basement. So that will be what is defined as phase one work, which is included in this grant application. They will begin work eff, effectively once all this is, all this paperwork is approved and signed. Uh, but they will have until October fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one to complete the work. Although it's, um, both the Insmeiers as well as the, um, grant administrator skid, believe that it will be much quicker than that, um, to get that done. So hopefully, as short as only a few months, depending on weather and a number of other factors. But most of the work is, is relatively, uh, simple in terms of the rehabilitation efforts that they see. Generally speaking, these, these commercial rehabilitation projects come relatively quickly. And so the grant agreement basically specifies the project, the compensation, the period for the grant agreement, as well as the parameters that will be required. Because it is a CDBG grant, for example, um, any construction that is done will have to comply with the Davis Bacon requirements for wage labor, um, on a program, project, for example. It also defines the disbursement, um, schedules and various things like that. So with that, I will take any questions that you only have.
So we're administering the grants?
That's correct. The way these funds work, the federal government, uh, awards states, the funds in the states distribute them, but they by law are only allowed to award them to municipalities, um, or counties. And so we have to accept the funds on behalf of the grantee, but we made the application on behalf of the grantee and so it's, it's really passed through, uh, grant.
Okay. Good to see this project continue to move forward. Any further question or comment? I entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, I move to direct the mayor to sign the contract and direct the mayor and the city manager to complete any documents associated with the grant process.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is any further question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries five to zero, thank you. Next on our agenda would be Tyler Technologies' contract approval.
So the agreement before you all is a, an agreement that specifies the process and terms for moving our Tyler Technology software in-house. Presently that software is, is, um, hosted on a server via the cloud, uh, with Tyler Technologies and the IT department has determined that if we bring that in, into our own, um, onto our own server as opposed to being cloud-hosted, we will get a number of benefits to include, um, ultimately some cost savings. But more importantly perhaps is some efficiencies with our software. Because if it's hosted, there is some timing issues that, um, are required whereby data sync from one location to another location. And depending upon how busy Tyler Technologies is, that can sometimes bug our systems down. But another benefit that's obviously much part of our calculus is the cost savings portion of this. So in twenty twenty, assuming the agreement is approved, we will have the migration process. So we will have an increase in costs for next year of approximately ten thousand dollars. The primary reason for that is, um, Tyler Technology comes on site and they assist with the migration of the software from their system to our system, um, as well as making sure the data is migrated and is verified and, and accurate. And so as a result, that we have to pay for, for those services, um, and so there is that upfront cost. But then, beginning in twenty twenty-one, um, we are anticipating a cost savings of nearly fifty thousand dollars a year by hosting this on our servers. We would have full control of that and it does, um, reduce to some extent our maintenance, ongoing maintenance costs, because we don't have to pay for the ongoing maintenance of somebody else's server, we can control that environment and do that. In addition to that, some of the savings that we will be having as a result of these changes, there are some modules in the Tyler Technology software that we presently don't use, that we are currently paying for or that we are using that we have decided that we really don't need to use because we've either found a different solution or we, we, we aren't using quite the extent that we thought we, we would when we originally contracted Tyler Technologies. So there will be some benefits to removing or reducing the number of modules that we're also purchasing as a result of that. So, um, with that, we would require the commission to approve the contract and ask that you do so so that we can get the migration plan, so we can get that taken care of as early into next year as possible so we can begin to get this taken care of.
So a one-time cost of ten thousand dollars saves fifty thousand a year after that.
That's correct.
I don't know, man.
Doesn't sound logical.
I don't have a clue what he was talking about.
Was this cloud coming through?
But I understand spend ten thousand, save fifty, I understand that part.
Trust me on migration.
Okay.
I mean, the, if this is the way that you guys want to do it, I mean, I don't know, I haven't, I don't know why I can argue with you about it, that's your system, so.
Yeah, I'm going to assume it's been vetted and we have the hardware to take care of this, we doing, and we're doing all we're doing, so.
The kid's on board, this is his idea.
All right, any other questions? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to direct the city manager to sign the contract with Tyler Technologies.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all, pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I was assuming we were going to go ahead and save forty grand this year from now on. Okay, next on our agenda would be commission and advisory board updates.
I have no advisory board update.
I have no advisory board update.
Any other question or new comments?
EFABC meets on Thursday, are you going to go to that meeting or do you want?
I'll be there, yeah.
Okay, I'll be there.
Okay, just wanted to check on that. Also, there's a porta potty laid on its side behind the Sonic.
Sonic?
Yeah, it's on the Frisbee.
No, okay. I'll send Brett out to get that tomorrow.
He's here tonight.
Twelve oh one is still.
It's going to be better in the dark. Okay. Matt?
So we, coming up, I know that the, the board, or the, the library board has always been the mayor in the art. And that just changed on, that we, we just changed that recently, or do we have to change?
Uh, the city commission will have to approve charter ordinance, chartering out of the, uh.
The way that that's spelled into a different, okay. I know Nick has wanted to be on that, be our representative for that for years.
I'd do that.
So I would like, I, I guess I'd like to see if we could get that moving to get that done. So when we come through the first of the year, Nick is available to be our representative for that board.
Yeah, I think, looking at that, given, I think we should charter out and give her some flexibility. And then if Bill wants to do that, I mean, let that, that be this next commission's decision on who that is.
I just, I'd like to have that ready so when we make that decision at the first of the year, if we can.
Yeah, I mean, I, staff was planning to move it forward, um, just to provide flexibility to the commission. In the event that you have a, a mayor that is unable to serve in that capacity, it doesn't make sense just to, you know, the mayor is no longer able to attend that meeting. Well, this legislation will give us the ability to flex out so somebody can, can do that just like any other committee, and so we were going to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Make sure that that's in place for.
That is a committee that's been difficult for me to participate in, so.
When do they meet?
Mondays.
Monday, maybe a week from today. And that's. Do a lot of work with school boards and that's school board nights always, and a lot of times they're out of town.
Yeah.
Difficult for me to get there often. Okay, no, I agree, I think give the city the flexibility to do what they need to do, moving forward.
That's all I got.
I don't have any board updates. EFABC is coming up on Thursday.
Do what?
Good luck tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Greg, good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
I was going to, yeah, I was going to say, tomorrow's, make sure you get out and vote. Tomorrow is the day, so, uh.
Speaking of EFABC, when you step down as mayor and Bill Young steps up as mayor, he's going to represent the college and the city on that board.
Um, I don't believe that the EFABC's, the city's member is actually assigned by, I don't think the mayor is the one that's actually assigned to that. I think the body.
Yeah, it's a body appoint somebody.
Representing the, the city, so. The five of you, well, including the mayor, once Bill gets on, will have to decide, determine who's actually going to represent the city in that capacity. It's not, it's not like the library board is presently where the mayor has to serve in that capacity. In this case, it's, they're for the five of you to sign.
Okay. Are you going to stay on the board?
I don't, there's not a spot for you.
Yeah, the, the representative does have to be on the city commission now.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll be talking about advisory boards in the next work session on Wednesday of next week. We'll, we'll bring in all of the things that need to be renewed because that will now change to your new cycle.
Yep.
Speaking of the Wednesday meeting coming up, um, I have a conflict. Again, I think I can actually talk to you this morning or at lunch today. I, I can be there for half of it or some of it, I can get started with it, but I'm not going to be able to. I have a commitment at six and it happens to be in town, so. I could get, be here to restart some of the conversation. But then I have to exit, so I apologize for that. That's all I got, city manager report?
Um, just a few things, uh, mostly reminders, um, tomorrow's November fifth and in addition to voting, we also have a ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow at noon, uh, Kelly's, et cetera. That business is at one twelve South Main, so if you're available, um, please stop by. In addition to that, um, I believe Interest Bank is also being recognized by the chamber as the business of the month, so if you're available, uh, I think that's from eleven thirty until one, um, at Interest Bank's location down here on Main and Central. Coming up on November ninth is the Celebration of Freedom Parade, and that's at eleven AM. They'll also have free hot dogs at Corte Park after the parade, so for all of those that are around, you can attend the parade and celebrate freedom and then also get free hot dogs down at Corte Park. And then on Monday, November eleventh, that's Veterans Day, so city offices will be closed, uh, although trash routes will run normal. So if you, if you are served by trash routes on that day, go ahead and get your trash out and we'll be taking care of you. I missed, uh, on Thursday, November seventh, we will have our Thankful Thursday, so we encourage folks to shop local downtown from six to nine PM. That's put on by the Chamber and Main Street, so I encourage you all to do that. And then you all may have noticed in my last weekly report, the chambers are hosting the Inspire Butler Fireside Chat on November sixth, beginning at five thirty at the Performing Arts Center. The former Spirit Aero Systems CEO Jeff Turner will be in town and he'll be taking questions from the, um, attendants. So if you're interested in attending, please let me know and we'll get you signed up for that on behalf of the city. In addition, the county, Butler County and USD three seven five have all reviewed and adopted the proposed revisions to the neighborhood utilization program that you all had talked about maybe a few meetings ago. The college still has to review that, but they will be doing that at their November twelfth meeting, uh, coming up here shortly. The county did have a minor modification to make to the provisions, um, regarding paying under protest and they're asking all cities that have an INRP to include that provision. And basically what it means, or what they'd ask is that if you are participating in the program and you pay under protest, then you would be removed from the program. And it was due primarily to an administrative, um, issue and the fact that if you're participating in this program and you're getting a benefit, then you shouldn't be able to protest your taxes. So they're asking all. So, they're asking all cities to put that in their plan, um, as such. Uh, USD four ninety and the city are working on the development of a new school crossing at, on Orchard Street near Fifth Avenue. Uh, that will be coming soon, um, the school district has requested that crossing. And if you're familiar, uh, the school district has built a sidewalk that goes pretty much straight out, almost parallel, parallel? With, uh, Fifth Avenue, and so it'll be a cross and it'll basically go from that sidewalk across the street. Um, and so that's being planned out as we speak now, and once that's available, we'll get it all put up and break rock and roll. And that's pretty much all I have for the time being.
I have, I have a question on the Orchard cr- crossing. That's to cross Sixth Street at Orchard.
No, it's to cross Orchard at Fifth Avenue.
To get to the west side of Orchard.
Okay, okay, gotcha, thank you for that clarification, I had it in my mind, I had it on Sixth Street. So, speaking of that, could we also consider a crosswalk, because I've had this caught up by actually, school age kids. A little further west down Sixth Street, because our only crosswalk is at Lincoln, Old Lincoln Site. And we have some residents, certainly the trailer park with, with, that's further west, so there's no crosswalk. Either you have to go down to Lincoln to cross and come back, or that's the only crosswalk they have access to. I mean, what's it take to consider or at least look into a crosswalk that's at, uh, like, is it Emporia? Or Taylor, something like that right there that's by that trailer park?
It wouldn't be Taylor.
Wouldn't be Taylor, no, it would be, it'd be, uh, Emporia or Hauser, something like that. West.
We've discussed, um, with the school even prior to construction, um, as you all may recall. We had a pretty significant cost, and the city was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars building the sidewalk on the south side of Sixth Avenue. Um, with a true signalized crosswalk, uh, you, you're probably in the range of a hundred and fifty thousand for that, for that push-up signal head. And then the concern too is there is no sidewalks on the north side of Sixth Avenue until you get to, um, Taylor, so where the pool is. Um, so we've discussed with the school, and, and probably something we'll bring up again, uh, with new administration. Is them looking at safer routes to school programs and, and them applying, and the city helping in any capacity we can. To get sidewalk constructed, to, to make it logical to have a crosswalk.
I'd like to see that, I, I'd, I'd like to see you do that, personally, yeah. To talk, kind of redo, reevaluate with the new, all the new people that they, that they've got over there now. Maybe they'd have a new set of, a new set of eyes looking at that.
So, yeah, so what they do with the two trailer parks, is r- r- really the only residential where school kids would live are the two trailer parks.
Yeah.
So, it'd be Mitchell Manor and then the one further to the west.
Mm-hmm.
And so the school does send buses to those trailer parks specifically to, if they're school-aged children. To get them so that they are not trying to traverse Sixth Avenue.
Right, right.
You know, the kids are gonna do what the kids are gonna do, um, but they are taking steps to hopefully.
Just as long as the conversation is going, it was brought up to me by actually some Blackmore students.
That's, I, yeah.
Um, so.
That you were serving too, so.
Meet with a bunch of them for, we with a, an age group. Uh, and to have kind of a mayor's day with them, and that's what they brought up, and it was, I thought that was interesting, so. Anyway, as long as the conversation's going, you're still working with the school district. Thank you for that report. Um, and I guess I would also say, anyway, I had a chance to listen to Jeff Turner, I would strongly suggest he's a good, he's a good resource, good speaker. That's excellent, uh, person to have in our community and be accessible like that. Kudos to the chamber for doing that. Anything else for the good of the cause?
I might just mention, and, and, um, just recently found, scheduling-wise, but on Vine Street, Wednesday, you'll see a closure of the northbound lane to do a repair of Water Main. Um, so, truck traffic that is northbound on Vine Street will be detoured, uh, um, Third Avenue, back to Main.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, if there's nothing else, I motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, five to zero, uh, we are adjourned.